April 25, 2022, the time is 9:00 a.m. We have a special meeting agenda for our airport. I'm officially calling the meeting to order. Attending Commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Phillyos, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No.
None. Moving on, and before we start with our first business items, Stephen, would you please introduce our guest?
Technically, it's not my guest, so I'm... What, Stephen, are you talking about first?
Okay.
I would be.
Steve, go right ahead, please.
So, this is Tracy Williams. She's the Airport Manager at the Bend Municipal Airport. And we reached out to her in an effort to try to understand better what the differential between a Part 139 and just a regular, well-run GA airport would be, rather than starting from a 139 and trying to figure out what things were going to be reduced if the Part 139 was given up.
Yeah, let's leave it at that, and we'll come back to it on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
So, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's back up. Thank you, Steve. Okay, back up to first item, which is the April 2022 Advisory Board Draft Minutes Review. Stephen?
Yep, Commissioners, we had a fairly short agenda. The big item was D-Zone, which is our parachute operator that has been on the field, requested a waiver to minimum standards. In your packet is the actual airport analysis of what they're actually waiving, requesting us to waive, and then D-Zone's actual email of that request. The request was very vague, so the airport staff had to go through our minimum standards and specifically call out different items. As you can tell, it's a very extensive list of items he's requesting to waive, because he does not have a facility, he does not have a... has not provided an operations plan, has not done anything we typically would assume and associate with a facility. The board requested, instead of denial, that... long story short of this whole description is that he come up with a plan that he can present to the board to address each item, and then come back with the goal of next in May. That's what the board recalls as well. That way, we can address it then. I had sent this in April to D-Zone to address them. His stance is that he has already submitted all these plans and everything. I do not agree with that, as he's merely stated that he wishes to build a facility, but provided no plans on how he'd plan access, gain connections to sewer water, parking, any of those items that we typically associate with "how do you operate." So, that's where we stand right now.
So, Stephen, for everyone's benefit, define D-Zone.
D-Zone is a skydiving operation on the field. They were the operating out-of-resort aviation. That's how they were able to meet the minimum standards. However, with Stancraft purchasing resort, Stancraft terminated their lease agreement. So, while they weren't meeting those standards, and they could have very easily gotten their lease agreement, in fact, we were just about to send out and that's on our side, execute their lease to them, when Stancraft purchased resort. So, that was when we stopped our process, because we didn't understand, because we were informed by Stancraft that they were no longer going to honor that lease agreement.
Okay, so the lease agreement was with resort?
It was with resort. We had nothing to do with their agreements.
Okay. Leslie, Bill, questions for Stephen?
None.
Go on, Stephen.
Status updates have attached it. However, we continue to have projects going on. We are closing out Taxway D-North runway. We've also will be, I believe, tomorrow, having the noticeable ward for the electrical phase for a decoupling project. Fence will be closed out as well. Snow removal, we're still trying to square everything away. The problem is even our pole barn buildings that have come back for bids this year are coming back. What we would expect, what was designed to be this year, they're coming back between $250 a square foot and $275 a square foot for a simple pole barn structure, which if you built them elsewhere, you typically associate being $40,000 to $50,000 structures if you built them on your own property. We're trying to understand why the cost difference is so high right now. We don't have a good answer. We've talked to multiple companies, and we're trying to figure out what's that cost factor, why that's driving that up so much. Is it the Buy American requirements? Is it the Davis Bacon wages? What is causing that cost to be so high? We haven't got a good answer yet. Nobody can provide us that answer, so.
So, Stephen, along those lines, there's $295,000 that you were going to put towards the...
So, there's about $800,000 from coming from federal money this year, $295,000 from the bill money, the bipartisan infrastructure money. We requested $300,000 from the state. So, there's quite a bit of money wrapped into this, that the $300,000 may or may it can get shuffled around, the bill money can get shuffled around, the $800,000 has to go to this.
Right. And then, will you... can you give us an updated CIP with the updated...
We can. It'll be a little bit later. It hasn't changed too much, but it's... we can provide you the one.
Sure. Thank you.
Also, Gulfstream Utility, Road Utility, they continue to have issues getting connection points, specifically the 18-inch line, water line, that is slated now to start June 6th. So, we will be kicking that off soon. They took another delay, and it was started planning in May, but unfortunately, they took another delay from their supplier. They couldn't... weren't able to get parts. If in a ramp expansion, we actually have a meeting scheduled this week, if I'm not mistaken, to discuss expanding to allow for six lots there. We'll come back later with a... if everybody agrees with it, to redevelop that. It'll be similar to what we did with Gulfstream Road. The individuals will be responsible for the expansion utilities and everything in that area as well. Right now, the cost estimates are about $80,000 a lot, though. 64 Rehab, we started actually doing survey work. They've wrapped that up in the last couple of days. They've done coring, surveying, falling weight assessment to determine subwaste design. So, we actually should be moving along over the next summer and into the winter. So, by February, we should have a finished design, so we can opt a bid for that project next year. Other items are sewer inventory. That is almost done. We're just waiting. TO's staff is going through the fun process of watching all couple miles of sewer line tape and video to determine how the lines look. ATC planning, we should actually have a meeting this week discussing what the next steps and kickoff for that. The CIP update, we'll get an updated CIP if there's more here. The Association, we'll talk a little bit more about this, obviously. They requested independent assessment, which is what I've provided to the board. We'll talk about that as Item 3. We can talk about that later as well. For public comment, Mr. Anderson also called in to question how TO's costs are reviewed. There appeared to be a misunderstanding about what the role of the Advisory Board's responsibility is for reviewing TO's invoices and any of the airport's invoices as the Advisory Board... that is not the Advisory Board's responsibility. I also made comments about the SRE building as well. For A, Sigfrid was TO did provide some additional explanations about the SRE building and the unrealistically unexpected high numbers that we received for that facility. And it's unfortunately, just from talking with other department heads, I think everybody is seeing unrealistically high numbers for bids.
Yeah, I think Solid Waste has put theirs off for a year.
That's right.
Also, Kurt Law did also, with Corley Aviation Maintenance, did ask if funding about for a tower, if 139 assists with that or not.
And then, I just want to point out, the ATC that you're talking about is Airport, the Control Tower study.
Yep, and that's a study to... that we've talked about in the past, where it's not doing a full study, it's not doing a cost benefit, it's just laying the groundwork and data points of...
See if we qualify.
To give the FAA a go, basically, okay, we see this as a problem, you should identify this and deal with it. This is your... kind of your problem, a safety issue, you should deal with this.
Who's funding that, Stephen?
We are. It's about $15,000.
Oh, okay. All right. Any other questions on the agenda? Bill, or rather, on the Advisory Board Draft Minutes? Leslie?
Let me just check. I think I went through all my notes, so I'm good.
Okay. Second item on the agenda, Part 139 presentation by Tracy Williams from Bend, Oregon. Welcome again, Tracy.
Thank you.
Take it away.
And just make sure the microphone on the podium is little green lights on. Might be a red light right now.
Yeah, she's good.
Perfect.
I know. Get to go solo with this super words. All right, so, good morning, everybody. Again, I'm Tracy Williams. I am currently the Bend Municipal Airport Manager. I've been there for just over two years. Actually, two years... today's my anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
And I get to share it with you. So, I've been an airport executive for over 30 years. I have served in various leadership capacities at airports throughout the United States, California, Nevada, Tennessee, Hawaii, and now Oregon. I have been an airport executive again for over 30 years. I'm certified in Safety Management Systems. I am an Airport Security Coordinator. It's a TSA thing. I'm a trusted agent, which means I can deal with sensitive security information for badging and licensing and things like that. I'm trained in aircraft rescue and firefighting. I'm a private pilot, single-engine land, and I have worked at various sizes of airports to include international, military, general aviation, and I am a U.S. Air Force veteran. I have a Bachelor's of Science degree in professional aeronautics from Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. I have a Master's of Aeronautical Science from Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, and I've just completed all my studies for a PhD in Business Administration with a specialization in public administration. So, that's a little bit about who I am, because some of you are probably like, "Who is she and why is she here?" So, that's who I am and why I'm here, is I was invited by some of your Pilot Association members who reached out to me about a week ago and asked me some questions. They were like, "Oh, your airport is kind of like ours. Do you have a Part 139? No. Are you thinking about getting one? No. Tell me why." So, we chatted a little bit, and they're like, "Well, can you come out and speak to our airport users?" I'm like, "Gladly." So, I am not here as a consultant. I am not here for anything other than provide information to a peer group, a different perspective, if you will. I don't have a dog in the fight. I am just here, I'll share what I know about the subject, and I will be more than happy to answer any questions after that. Thank you. Now, here's the test. Can I click? There we go. Comparisons. So, again, I only found out about this matter last week, and so I was able to do just a little bit of research, and so I decided to do some comparisons and contrast to the different types of air... our two different airports. So, Bend, of course, is on the left, and you are on the right. So, ownership. We're owned and operated by the city of Bend, but we reside in the county. Of course, you're owned and operated by the county. I've also worked at airports' structures that have included state-owned, county-owned, and airport authority-owned. Operations, I put in RED, what's kind of significant. I'm at 141,000 annual operations. I'll hit 160 this year. You're based on what I found on your 5010 from the FAA database, is you're at 125,000 operations. So, we're recovering now from COVID that drastically reduced our operations, so that's why we're a little bit low at 141, but we're getting back up to closer to 160. I can tell that by our fuel cells. Base aircraft have got 234, you've got 248. Now, I'm assuming the information on the 5010 is current and correct. Jets, I've got 13 base jets, you've got 12, right? What's significant that I would bring to your attention is, under the bipartisan infrastructure law, I'm getting $763,000 annually for the next five years, you're getting $295,000. What I would recommend and suggest, you talk to your airport's district office and reevaluate that, because I think 12 is the magic number. If you can get 13 or identify at least one more jet, you might be up at 763,000 in entitlement money. So, I'd encourage you all to look at that. That's what I had to do, because I was at that number. And then, January, I'm like, "Whoa, whoa, whoa." So, I got on the phone, started calling some of my stakeholders. "Can you write me an email and say a base out of your airport at least 51% at a time?" And because I have a really great relationship with our stakeholders, it was no problem. They're like, "Sure, Tracy, what do you need?" Fuel. Last year, again, due to COVID, we only sold about 750,000 gallons. I talked to our FBO just before I came, because I talk to them every day. We're probably going to hit a million. I just talked to Stephen. He told me you're at about 2 million. So, you sold a lot more fuel than me. Air traffic control tower, we talked... you all talked a little bit about that. So, when I came to Bend in April of 2020, the city had just completed a survey, and the number-one desire of our airport users was an air traffic control tower. So, I actively began pursuing that. And within six months, I received notice from the FAA that we are a candidate for the Federal Contract Tower Program, and we've got until 2025 to get it done. So, right now, where are we with our air traffic control tower? Is our site selection is underway. Did I do that? Can I do that?
You're fine. No, you're...
Okay. So...
Hi, whoever joined us on the phone, can you please mute yourself?
Can you please mute yourself? So, I thought that was my alter ego, Stacy. So, we've got until 2025 to get it built, and right now, we are in our site selection to determine the exact location. That's $300,000. No, excuse me, $200,000. We hope to be in construction, designing construction by the end of next year. So, what that site selection involves is like a 3D modeling to determine what the height, and I think we're going to be at about less than 100 feet. That site selection study should be complete by the end of the month. How are we going to pay for it? Good question. It's a $7.5 million project, and it just testified before the state of Oregon to get 4.8 million for the project. And then, I'm also applying to the FAA under the BIL money for the total amount, which is, again, 7.5 million. So, we'll have an overmatch, right? If all else fails, we will issue debt. We're going to build our tower. We have tremendous support for pretty much everything I'm doing out there at the airport, tremendous support, because we have a really good working relationship with our stakeholders. I send out a newsletter once a month. It's just newsy, information that people want to know what's going on, how can I help? Whenever I apply for certain things, they write letters of support. Their newsletter reaches about 300 recipients every month. I don't have an airport advisory board, because I meet with them so regularly. I meet with them once a month anyway. I go to all of their meetings, or I do safety stand downs, I issue an annual State of the Airport Address. Everybody's got my mobile number. They don't hesitate to call. Tracy, are you plowing right now? Those are the kind of questions I get, or I'll get the calls from Seattle Center Citation Jet 41 November Delta did not close their flight plan, and it only happens on the weekends in the middle of the night. So, I'm encouraging all of you, for the sake of the airport manager, close your flight Part 139, are we Part 139-certified? No. Are you? Yes. Do I have access control system, as in fences and gates? No. Do you? Yes. So, that's where we are in terms of comparisons. So, Part 139, this is what I was really asked to talk about. So, I've given you a little bit of perspective, right? So, do we have a Part 139 certificate? No. Am I interested in pursuing one? No. Because, as Stephen can attest, and your commission and many of you know, that aviation is already highly regulated, so you can meet the intent of Part 139 without a certificate and without those unfunded mandates. And that's how I've always run my airports, even when I was just running GA. Half my time over the last 30 years has been air carrier, Part 139 airports, and the other half has been general aviation. So, I know it can be done. I would conduct, if I were you, my advice and recommendation is a cost-benefit analysis, right? So, we had to do a... let me back up to the air traffic control tower. For Bend, our cost-benefit analysis was done by FAA. The BC ratio is 1.0 to be eligible for a tower. We are at three. So, you really want to do the DC analysis first, or soon, to determine if you're going to qualify for a federal contract tower. Now, I have to... I'll just tell you all, but back in Bend, everybody was like, "Wow, we wanted this tower for years." Bend is the third busiest airport in the state of Oregon, and it's the only one without a tower. And they were like, "How'd you do it?" I wanted to tell a lie and say it was like, "It was really tough." Truth to the matter is, I'm on the board of FAA contract towers, so it wasn't that hard, if you got a seat at the table. So, I hate to guess, I'm just guessing here, what is the cost of maintaining a Part 139 operating certificate? I threw this out here as a million. And the reason I say that is, I don't know, anybody prior Navy? Okay, so you're probably familiar with the Millington Naval Air Station, the A-School, right? So, I was the executive director after the Base Realignment Act, and when it transferred over to civilian, we were alternate landing facility reliever for Memphis FedEx, just for FedEx. It cost me $1 million a year to maintain that certificate, and they paid for it. So, if you're going to maintain the certificate, I hope you have a pass-through system so that it's not necessarily borne on the backs of the... at general aviation users. We were index D, so that's a consideration, the cost-benefit. Now, if you get rid of this... if you surrender the certificate, does that mean your operating costs are going to go down by a million? Not necessarily. Probably not, because there are still certain costs that are associated with managing an airport safely. It would be cut down significantly, though, and the hassle factor to the perceived by the airport users would also be reduced, because you've got unfunded mandates that can be pretty significant. You don't have scheduled air carrier service, so you don't... I don't see the need for it. I couldn't do a... I couldn't make a... I could not make a business case for an air traffic... uh, excuse me, for a Part 139 certificate at the Bend Airport, just saying. But, might be in your best interest to continue to do so. A benefit-cost analysis would help come to that decision, particularly with stakeholder Aircraft rescue and firefighting, that's another biggie if you have a certificate, because I'm trained in aircraft rescue and firefighting. I know that I could probably buy a 1,500-gallon rapid intervention rescue vehicle for about a million, right? FAA might fund some of it, but that's not really where their priorities are. They like putting their money in pavement. That's just one. Another thing you have to have with your Part 139 certificate is a wildlife hazard management plan, right? And the last airport I was at was Lahui in Kauai, and we had to have a biologist, we had to have training every year, initial and recurrent, to be able to recognize the different wildlife and to be able to identify a depredation permit, and it was just expensive, right? When I was at Millington, my wildlife hazard management plan was a 12-gauge in my office. And when users would come in, particularly consultants, because it stayed on the credenza above my desk, and they would always look at me like... they got off track, because they kept looking at the 12-gauge on the rack, and like, "What is that for?" And I'm like, "For consultants who stay too long?" Airport security plan, that's another requirement in Part 139 that I won't... don't want to have anything to do with, nor do our users. Like I said, I'm a security coordinator, so... But, the additional expense associated with maintaining that system, particularly the access control system, you have to be able to grant or deny access on demand, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Somebody has to be available for that all the time. And then, what are you trying to keep out with the gates? Is it terrorists? Or is it wildlife? Or some other bad actor, right? An unintended consequence of a perimeter fence, which is a great thing to have. Half our users want a fence, at least the higher-end ones do, like the Piper Cubs. No, they don't want a fence. The tail draggers, they don't want a fence, and they told me. Because an unintended consequence is when the system goes down. It always seems to malfunction when it's you trying to get through the gate. And if nobody is there for you... And if nobody is there for you, you're going to call the airport manager or somebody in the middle of the night, right? Depending on how far away we live or if you can do it remotely, that's great too. But it's that, what, what the users at Bend don't want is the hassle factor. So the higher end users and customers just have security cameras on their hangers and that seems to do it. Um, so that could be pretty expensive too. And the other difference is because even if we wanted per- perimeter fencing, I couldn't call it a security fence because we're not Part 139. So it's not grant eligible by FAA at 90%. I'd have to call it a wildlife fence, not security. It's perimeter fencing to keep out wildlife. And it seems like our three strands of barbed wire are kind of doing the trick. I don't have moose. We're more inclined to have like, um, uh, deer, dogs, the like. Um, how can you, if you choose after your cost benefit analysis to surrender the Part 139 operating certificate, you can still maintain the intent as applicable to your particular facility by using best management practices and/or training with your staff. I'm not here to promote the AAAE, American Association Airport Executives, um, training program, but they've got a great program. You can send people to the school, ba- basic and advanced operations, um, safety. Ideally though, what I would suggest here is to bring, because they're going to, they're going to talk like on a national level. You can bring them onsite and have your whole staff there learning and they will tailor the program to your particular airport. You can invite your FBO workers to be there because they're your second set of eyes, right? Even any of your users, just so that they have a better feel for what is an operations specialist do. And it also helps to manage expectations. I like to be very transparent. So that's what I got there and, okay. Thank you for listening and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Tracy. Leslie, Bill, any questions?
No.
I think so. So.
No, Stephen? Yeah, we're going to hold the others to the end, to public comments. Stephen, go ahead.
So I, I have some questions for Tracy.
Yes, sir.
Tracy, and these are kind of broad and these are very things, I just want your best opinion. Uh, in the letter this, the association sent you, did you feel like you were contacted by the airport?
I, I thought it was a recognized organization that supports the airport. And I did think it was the airport until I went online and saw, a- and I, the letter was written by a Steve, right? And so when I went online and then I looked up your airport for under the 5010, um, to find it, it was a Stephen. So I just kind of was like, oh, okay. I thought it was the same person.
Uh, I mean, you kind of touched on my next question. In the letter, it identified 12 specific items that they identified that they feel are 139 and their staffing levels to manage additional reporting, airport security requirements, recurrent staff training, fire suppression, emergency response equipment, snow removal equipment, administrative offices, equipment storage facilities, maintenance facilities, runway, taxiway parking requirements and compliance with expect inspections. In your experience, can you provide which of those are actually identified either in Part 139 or in our ACM, or in airports ACM?
Well, each airport certification manual is its own. It's site specific. There are some general requirements in each of them based on what your threat might be or your particular situation. For example, um, at my airport, in Lahui, Hawaii, we had an airport certification manual. Did I have a snow removal plan? No. Was it required to have one? No. But if you do have a Part 139 certificate, you'll have to identify it when the snow exceeds a certain minimum. For example, let's just say two inches, boom, you better be out plowing. Otherwise you put yourself at risk. Aircraft rescue or firefighting, that's one. You've got to have meet minimum, I think your index is A. Again, you bought a T 1,500 gallon rapid intervention vehicle for a million. You might as well have two because if one goes down, now you are out of compliance. Um, training, uh, staff levels. Whenever, if you have a Part 139 operating certificate and whenever you have scheduled air carrier operations, you have to have an airport operations person on duty until that last plane either lands or takes off. When I was in Hawaii, I spent many a time because our last flights coming in, it would be three of them and they always were scheduled at 11:50 PM. I spent countless hours in the terminal overnight. So that's a staffing issue you have to plan for or pay a whole bunch of overtime. Um, did I miss any? Did you want me to hit on?
No, but I think, I think you hit them all that I thought they were. Um, my next question for you is.
Oh, let me back up, snow. Here's another thing, like at the Bend Airport, uh, and I saw on your budget, you were looking at what, like $750,000 for a snow removal, snow equipment, storage facility? At Bend, we put in our budget, our budget, my budget for snow, winter operations is $60,000 a year. When I came on, um, two years ago, the first thing I did was to buy a Ford F-350, trick it out with bells, whistles, lights, radios and a plow. Now we do our own plowing in-house, but I still have a contract. Each time we get more than two inches of snow, because that's what I would have to do in Part 139, I might call in an outside contractor, but we do it ourselves because we can jump on it right away. I don't have storage for our snow equipment. I don't have a building, but for, with our contract, the contractor brings out his equipment and prepositions it during the winter months. Um, mine, I just take the plow off and, and put it in storage. But what I've learned for our small airport, I start with the runway, work the way out. It's $10,000 a day, anytime we call them out. So by buying a Ford F-350, training my guy to be comfortable talking on the radio, when to plow, where the priorities are, I think I spent like 20,000 this year.
Um, have you ever been a signatory on an ACM?
Absolutely. I've been doing this for 30 years.
Okay. Um, have you read Porta Lane's ACM, inspected the airport or any, done any real in-depth research besides reading the 5010?
No. I, I, you see, that's bigger than any Bible. Um, and I just found out about this invitation, um, uh, you know, like I said, last week. And, um, again, because each one is tailored to its own. I flew in last night, so I didn't have, I came in at night. The lights looked good.
Were they on?
They were on. The beacon was working, the windsock was lit, pilot control lighting worked, so.
So.
But no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to read your ACM.
Um, one, my, next question is, would you agree with the statement that becoming a 139 airport is significantly more costly than maintaining a 139 certificate?
Say again?
That it's significantly more costly to become a 139 airport than maintaining a 139 airport?
It depends. It depends. Like, for example, if you've, if you were, had a sister airport, right, say Spokane, they might want to give you a, you know, a, um, a, 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 a Oshkosh 5,000 gallon rapid intervention rescue vehicle. If you already operate like a Part 139 anyway, yes, there will be some initial investment, but FAA is totally cool if you surrender it, they will give it back to you later on.
I, I, I don't fully agree with that one, but, um, kind of want to compare airports because you kind of compared a little bit about it, but.
Yes, sir.
I, I want to compare some other items like, Porta Lane has about 1,300 acres, you're about 420.
420.
Um, we have two runways that are 5,400 and 7,400. You're at 5,200 for your one runway, right?
Yeah. Our master plan calls for an extension, um, 1,000 feet and a parallel.
Okay.
Once the demand occurs.
And your weight capacity for that is 30,000, correct?
Okay.
Um, ours is 50,000, it's 165,000.
I'm not sure that that really makes a difference in terms of operations.
I'm just talking, I'm not, I'm ignoring 139, I'm just talking about.
Oh, okay.
I'm talking about comparing, comparing airports because the association is talking about comparing Bend to us. And I'm talking just.
Sure.
You know, pavement sections are completely different, you have completely different runways. You know, realistically, our pavement, we have probably three times the amount of pavement you do. We have three times the amount of, you know, area. Um, you look at air taxi and commuter ops.
Of those as well?
You have, you have those. We have about 27,000 of those.
Okay, okay.
Um, what's your ground, your ground lease you told me on the phone was?
Hmm, our, 70% of our revenues come from ground leases and hangers. My ground rent, uh, ground lease rate is 36 cents a square foot and I think yours is 22.
Yeah, we're, we're 21, we're going to be moving to 22 cents. Um, so when I, you know, you, you said you own about half of the hangers in the field, we own two.
Right, so, um, in addition to having, um, I want to say just under, the city of Bend has just under 100, uh, 200 hangers, right? And the other half about the same is private. Within the last 18 months, we built 24 new hangers. And within the next 12 months, depending on how the steel comes in, we've got like five under construction right now and we'll be building another 10 or so within the next, uh, 12 months. We offer long-term leases to amortize the investment. Um, and of your, what did you say, 1,400 acres? Are you saying it's all developed and built out or is it raw land? So it's kind of not, most of my land is built out.
We have, a good chunk, most of ours is, we've got about.
Yeah.
About 200 acres left that's available.
And we also have, um, a waitlist for hangers. That was the number two thing our users, our stakeholders wanted was more hangers. So we have a waitlist of 50. Um, and in fact, um, of, right now on my desk are six different development proposals to do additional development at the airport because we're just really responsive and we're growing like crazy. But we put it on pause in order to reevaluate what's fair and, um, and what's in the best interest of the city long term. So we've got a very active airport and the demand is there and our growth is there.
So my, my last question for you is, you said your, your budgets, from my research, is about 850 to 900,000. That sound about right for your operations budgets, excluding?
Think on a little bit more than that, my capital improvement.
Ignoring capital, ignoring capital budget.
I think you can't because if you don't do capital improvements and continue to defer, then, then you're going to have a capital improvement.
I, I agree with you, but I'm just comparing apples to apples on this one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It would, your operation cost of the bu- your budget is about, about that, correct, from my research?
Okay, maybe your research is right. I'm sorry, I don't have it committed to memory.
Okay, so.
I don't usually commit to memory things that I can look up. God, this is too old.
So when I compare our budget, we're, so I'll say 150,000 for yours.
Okay.
Ours is about 1.3 million.
Okay.
So I look at, you know, cost per acres, you're right around 2,000 per acre. And I, we're about 1,000 per acre. So, and I'm ignoring 139. But you look at all of our numbers, we're three times the size. We have more, larger aircraft coming in, we have larger sizes. My concern is when the association, this is not talking more about you, it's more talking.
So I'm not being interrogated?
You're not being interrogated. This is more conversation about when you compare the airport and if you were to increase your budget or increase your size to what we are, a fair assessment to me would be to say you double your budget to support that kind of activity of ours.
And I would also operate like a business and make a business case decision for all of the decisions that we make. Um, one of the other things that we've done and I think why our rates are where they are is when I came onboard, like you, you told me five years ago, when you came, the first thing you were handed was the appraisal, raise the rates, right? We did. And so the rates in some cases went increased from 20% to up to 40%. The users, the stakeholders were outraged. And so, um, I did meet with our users and, uh, came to a compromise. Said, okay, you haven't had your rates increased in over 10 years. You didn't have the CPI increases. So it seems really dramatic. So this is what we're going to do. For years that end in five and that end in zero, we're going to do an appraisal. For this year, we will split the cost. I'll do half this year, half next year. And in the years that don't end in zero or five, it's an automatic 3% increase. And so it won't hurt so much. And we're going to give everybody a brand new lease with those terms and conditions spelled out because we're not having this conversation again. And they were in agreement, it was fair, it was reasonable. And they know, because I meet with them so regularly, they know where the money is going, back into the airport. So I don't have a problem. So at first it was like sticker shop, but then everybody was like, oh, okay, cool.
And I agree and that's, my just concern is, as a comparable airport, yes, you have jet traffic, but we have, the Porta Lane has significantly more. We sell more fuel, we, you know, you, we have three times as much.
Yeah.
It, it's, concerns me that when you compare, especially budget, and that's what the association continues to bring up as well. We want to know the cost of having this. Well, we're at 1.3 million and you're a non-139 airport and, you know, you're almost as much as we are in our costs. Especially if you multiply out of what if we're as the same size airport, you'd probably be more than what we are to be in the airport. And so realistically, talking to the commission, whenever we talk, I talked in the industry of what our budget is as Porta Lane, everyone is astonished at how low our budget is. So that's what concerns me is that we do a lot in-house. Uh, one correction I'm going to make is we don't have a security plan where we're Class 4 139 airport. All of our fencing is not security fencing, is wildlife fencing.
Thank you for the correction. I appreciate that.
Just as a, just as a clarification.
Thank you.
So that's, that's where my concern is, is where is that comparableness to this?
I think what's the most comparable, not so much the numbers, is the fact that we are self-sufficient. And you're self-sufficient.
Yeah.
That's what matters at the bottom at the end of the day, is are, are you self-sufficient? And are you making good business decisions? And entrusting the, as your fiduciary responsibility to your stakeholders. I think that's what's really important. So even if, um, our operations incre- I'm just going to put it back into the airport.
Yep. And that's always our goal too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Adv- I'm just going to ask the advisory board, do you have any questions before we move on to the third item, which frankly, frankly, I haven't figured out, but that's okay. Maybe we're already on it and.
To some extent.
I'm sorry?
To some extent, yeah.
To some extent, okay. Any questions for Tracy from the advisory board?
I just, a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have time to tour an airport this weekend later today?
Well, I'm going to have to fly out of it anyway. So I'll get the aerial tour.
I think it'd be interesting if we could see what's happening on the north side and some of the other developments.
Excellent, excellent. I, I always love touring airports and.
Leslie, Bill, questions for Tracy?
None.
I don't think so. Um, Tracy, were you going to have Steve follow up? Steve Anderson?
Yes, please, I'd like to defer now and say thank you for the invitation to bringing me out here. Um, I guess I'm not being paid for it. They've covered all my expenses. I got no dog in the fight, so thank you.
Tracy, I've got, I've got a couple of questions real quick.
Yes, sir.
Um, and if you don't have the data handy, I understand that. Um, just take last summer, if you will, because I suspect like us, that's your busiest period. What were your peak operations? Let's say in a 24-hour period, what were your peak operations?
Um, during the summer months, we have really good fine weather. I'm probably at 3, 40, 50 a day.
Okay. Would that be peak? That's average. Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Um, and I, again, I know very little about Ben, for that matter, the airport. I presume, if you're looking at a tower, do you presently, or are you anticipating commercial operations?
No, it's for safety.
It's strictly for safety.
So this is a port in the state of Oregon, we don't have a tower. Um, I've got everything from tail draggers and gliders to Cessna Citation jets, one runway, opposite direction traffic.
Okay.
You know, if you fly, if you're coming in a, in a Citation and a, a tail dragger kind of cuts in front of you without cocking, it's like being on the, on the freeway, and somebody is merging in, and they just get right in front of you at, at 100 miles an hour, right? That's what it's like for you guys. So that's what we find is.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time, thank you for your contribution, we appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
You bet. Do we, uh, we have a third item on the agenda before we go any further?
Steve was going to, I think, finish out her presentation, uh, and then.
Go ahead, Steve.
It kind of.
I'm not really finishing out, uh, Tracy's, uh, presentation, I think she covered the ground very well. Uh, I don't have much to add. Uh, I would like to draw a distinction, though, between the lease rates. Um, you know, Stephen brought up that he thought some things were not comparable, and that he pointed those out. Well, uh, one of the things that the Bend Airport does not do, they do not charge for sewer and water, and those are add-ons at Coeur d'Alene Airport. So I'm not sure, I mean, the sewage use and the water use varies significantly between uh, hangar owners and, and FBO, and so I don't know what that comparable number would come up to, but, uh, but I think that needs to be weighed into the, into the consideration. And as far as, as Tracy coming up here, she did it on her own as just a factual presentation, because it was a plea from me, we were trying to come up with additional information for you folks to better understand Part 139. It's a fairly complex issue, and it's, uh, very subjective, coming up with the, the numbers that would be different between a Part 139 and a, and a non-Part 139. And I think Tracy did a wonderful job of talking about where the ambiguities are and, you know, what, what those issues would be. But, uh, I, I just want to thank her from the bottom of my heart for coming up here. We contacted four other, uh, non-Part 139 airports and, and got a variety of responses back, but no one that had the credentials that, that Tracy's got, and also a willingness to travel on very short notice and to put together a presentation where, um, she knew very little about Coeur d'Alene before she came up. So again, thank you, Tracy, and, and thank you, folks.
Thanks. Appreciate it. So why don't we open up for public comment? Let's go.
Could I ask a quick question, Tracy?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Your sewer and everything, is that provided by the city, or?
Yeah, it is.
Is it managed by the airport?
No, it's, uh, provided by the city. In fact, I've got a project right now that starts next month to upgrade our pump house, so that we put right, um, better service to our airport users and in recognition that we're growing.
Yeah.
So we're just trying to be real proactive, but no, I don't charge.
Is it only provided by the city?
Right.
Yeah, and so eventually, we will be two. We, we will go from Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board as an owner to just as a customer with the City of Hayden. I'm working on that, but it looks like it's going to be a year out minimum. And then hopefully, that should decrease our rates, because now we will be sharing the infrastructure with all of the users instead of our little 1% airport users that are funding all of the operations and maintenance for way more lines than the City of Hayden does per, per user. So, um, a year, just, I'm trying as fast as I can, but with construction delays, you know, we can't get out until Phase 2 is done, so.
I think our pump house, our new pump house rehab project is about a million, and we're not passing on any cost to our users.
And that's, because that's covered by the city?
And it's on the airport. It's ours.
Yep.
Okay, thank you again, Tracy.
We've got the economy of scale with it.
Okay, let's move on, let's make it quick. Come forward, give us your name, please.
Yeah, Shane Rogers. This was a question for Tracy, if you've got just one second.
Yes, sir.
We touched on, I know, uh, Stephen had brought up the, the 139 cost, um, and, and creating one as or maintaining one. Hypothetically, if Bend was going to become a 139 because an air carrier wanted to come in, you had touched on pass-through rates. I'm assuming that being the manager that it sounds like you are, and the communication you have with your end-users, that you would probably negotiate a pass-through cost with that air carrier, rather than putting it on the county, or the city, or the, any of those, is, I'm.
Yes. So let me explain how, uh, air carriers work real quick.
Go ahead.
So, um, for one, you, um, the landing fees are about one, um, a dollar per thousand pounds. So Stephen, can you tell me how much a Dash 8 or Q4 100?
Uh, if we were, because we've looked at this, if you had a commercial, a 173 come in, your landing fees per year would probably be three or four times a, a week, you'd be half a million plus.
Right. So that's where, that's where you get that revenue from. The other revenue is they, they buy a lot of fuel, they burn a lot of fuel. Um, then you're also, so there's that. Um, it also will bring out, um, parking, parking is major, and then you don't even charge for parking. That's what, like, the, one of the, where most revenues for an air carrier come from, is actually from automobile parking. Um, then the other thing is, you're going to get a passenger facility charge, which is a head tax, usually about $4.50 per. Um, if your aircraft parks overnight, you're going to get a RON fee. So it kind of pays for itself, but, and then here's the other thing, and I don't want to get too far off into the weeds on it, but if an air carrier came to my airport right now and wanted to bring in an air carrier, just say our runway was long enough, uh, I wouldn't get a Part 139 certificate. I could either limit it one, or make sure that the, um, or I could have, meet some of those requirements on demand. So rather than having a dedicated fire department, have a mutual aid agreement that says during air carrier landings, um, you will be on standby.
Any other comments? We've got about five minutes left.
We should do item three quick.
Yeah, go right ahead, Steve.
So item three was something I sent out to the board previously.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
My recommendation is that this actually goes back to the advisory board. Um, at the same time, my recommendation is that we hold a workshop with the, uh, the association, um, because one of the items that we continue to have an issue with, and I've asked this in past times, is what is it, what level of service does, are they wanting?
Get a little closer to it.
What level of service are they wanting? Um, and that's why, what I, what requesting from the association is that they actually review our airport certification manual, which is our agreement between us and the FAA of what we're actually going to do.
Okay.
And speci, specifically identify what sections they are looking to reduce or remove from that item, and that way we can go forward from there. But we've, this was what was requested, and these are the, some of the questions that we really need to have answered out of this, um, because there are some legal questions from this, but we need to have an understanding of what level of service do they want, because if they're talking no longer doing snow removal operations where we do, well, that massively affects, um, other people.
So let me ask you this, Stephen, just doing away with the 139, why does that mandate that we remove any services?
It doesn't, but if we're not, my question is, is why would we want to get rid of it? Because it verifies, one big thing about the ACM that's not talked about is, it provides a level of security to the county if we do it, if we keep it, because it's, since we're inspected by the, a federal agency that says, yes, you are operating safely and meet all of our standards.
But they, they do that now?
That's what they do now, but if that, we get, we surrender this certificate.
They're not going to inspect anymore?
They're not doing, they're no longer inspecting us. We no longer have that guarantee, we no longer, they no longer do that. Like, they don't, they don't, the Part 139 inspectors do not inspect Bend, they don't do anything involved, involving that.
But you still have regular inspections with the FAA?
We.
So, so, no. So if you get rid of 139, there'll be no inspections at all?
Zero, almost no inspections. They'll have some inspections from our ADO office, our airport district's office, but they're very limited, and I think I've only ever seen.
Is that out of Helena?
Yes.
Okay, so your recommendation is we turn this over to the advisory board?
Yes.
Bill? Thoughts?
That's fine. I think I just wanted a return on investment, I just wanted a cost analysis. I, like I've said before, I'm not, I was not considering getting rid of this, I just wanted the cost analysis.
I want to know what it costs to do the cost analysis.
That, that's kind of where this is, is a very, well, what's, what level of service are we talking about? Are we keep, are we keeping everything the same? Are we still doing fire stuff, are we still doing fire departments?
Yes, keep, keep all levels of service the same, because you have users who want this level of service, so.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Our costs are actually going to go up then, because we then have to replace the fire truck. We then have to do those other things that the FAA will pay, uh, to replace. For example, fire replace, fire truck replacement is one of the highest-level indexes, right below runway reh, rehabs that they'll pay. So then we have to start covering that cost of an auto truck.
Right, so, so that's what I'm talking about. So the cost-benefit analysis is, the 139 allows more FAA money to cover these things. So that, that's what I'm looking for.
And that's where, last time we talked about it, is basically we're double comparable, I mean, northern tier, or northern GA airport, we have double the federal money in the last 12, 15 years.
Okay, so back to the advisory board and proceed with the cost-benefit analysis.
If we're, we can, it, it depends on what level of detail. If the association still wants the airport to be completely out of everything, this is the cost. That's the cost that's on the back of the sheet. You know, you're $100,000 plus legal reviews.
Yeah, I'm not interested in that level of detail, so.
And I can give you a rough estimate of what it is, but if, if we're keeping everything the same, we can, I can give you an, an estimate of what that is, so.
Yeah, because some of the quotes that you provided to get an independent analysis, frankly, were off the wall.
The problem is, this is, there's a significant amount of detail that was required, depending on what's, what you're trying to do.
Okay, so who performs this analysis? Return it over to the advisory board, who's going to do this?
Airport staff.
I agree with that.
Lauren?
Well, I think the workshop will probably be helpful to figure out exactly what, you know, how we can go forward on that.
Okay.
So I don't know.
Yes, Joan?
So I, I would agree with the workshop, just like we did with, uh, partnerships we've had, um, in working through the rules and standards, where we have representatives from the airport association, members of the airport advisory board and staff, all present in the room, to sort through everything and do the job.
Okay, fair enough. Last word, Steve.
One, one quick thing. So Stephen says it's going to be more expensive for y'all if we drop 139. Well, part of the presentation that Tracy made showed the $795,000 or $750,000 that they got from the FAA last year versus our 295. I think it's way more complicated than what Stephen's saying, and $100,000 to do a study is ridiculous.
I agree.
What, what we had contemplated was, have Stephen put together a scope of work? What does he want to have looked at? If he wants to look at the ACM and have someone do that, put out an RFP and say, you know, these are the types of people that could do this, maybe some of them don't want to, but it doesn't cost anything to put out an RFP, and they'll tell you what it's going to cost to give you the actual number without doing a study to do it. A study is ridiculous. You got more from Tracy this morning than you're, than you're going to get from any consultant that takes a look at this, this issue, because there's, it's way too nebulous, um, and, and there's just not enough concrete things to, to quantify it down to, it's going to be $600,000 a year that we save, or it's going to be $50,000. You can't say that without having an RFP go out and have some people respond to it, or don't respond.
Yeah, but, okay, but let me stop you right there. So you issue the RFP, who is, who are the respondees? This is what I want to know.
It, it depends on what scope he puts together, and who can do that type of work.
Have you seen the scope? Okay, because that, that I think would be very helpful if you guys saw what scope, which to me is way more in-depth than what I need.
Right, right.
And so, um.
So if you guys can put together this working group, I think you can come up with some reasonable analysis and make some reasonable assumptions and come to some conclusions.
I, I would hope so. I mean, I would hope that we have more communication with Stephen, that we, you know, we would, we would honor that. And, and we're not against Part 139, we're, we're trying to find information, just like you are. So that's where we're at. We're not trying to say dump it or keep it, but it seems to me the preponderance of evidence right now says, why keep it? Because it's probably going to cost us more. So that's, that's the last thing I'll say. And thank you for going over time and for, for listening to all that was presented here today.
Okay. Tracy, yes, please, go right ahead.
One thing I'd just add, in, in terms of a benefit cost analysis, I can give Stephen a couple of phone numbers before I leave today. That's a phone call to find out how much it costs, and these are aviation airport subject matter experts that do just airports.
Fair enough.
I'll give you some phone numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on that note, I've got 10:04, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, appreciate it. Thank you.